Good evening, everyone. My name is Lloyd Craycroft. I'm the Executive Director here of Victory Ministries Center of Hope. It's always a pleasure to host any event, be part of what is going on in the community. And on behalf of Chief Crispin and Mayor Magriff, I want to welcome everybody. We are just thrilled to be part of the Whitehall community. And you know, what we do here is where material needs assistance ministry. So people come here for food and clothing and counseling and pastoral care, jobs, tutoring for kids, and we also have a partridge in a pear tree. So we just would like to welcome you. And at this time, I want to turn it over to Pastor Toby Cambram.
Thank you, Lloyd. I'd invite you to join me in prayer, if you would. Almighty God, we thank you for the graciousness that you've shown to us this day, for the liberties that we've been endued with, the places that we call home, the communities, where we have our friends and our families. We thank you for these common graces to all of us. We thank you for our first responders, our firefighters, our police department, those who serve us in our medical fields. We thank you for our various branches of the military who stand ready all over our globe to protect our freedoms and honor our Constitution. We thank you for the Whitehall Police Department, their leadership, their patrol officers, and all who work within their hallways and offices. And we pray for your blessing upon them, that you could enrich them in their work of justice and mercy, and that you could help us as citizens to aid them and honor them. And we thank you for these things, pray in thy name. Amen.
Mayor Magriff, can you come up, please? I'll give you time, keep talking.
Thank you so much for coming out this evening. I know it's not great weather, and just to see the amount of people who are here this evening gives me hope that any progress that we made, we're going to keep on making it. And it's because of citizens like you that are here and you're interested in what we can do to make our Whitehall City safer, and what we can do to support our police department and our safety forces as we go forward. You're going to be here tonight about our successes and challenges coming up. We've made a great improvement in crime reduction between downwards, going downward with violent crime, robberies and burglaries. But you know what? The chief thinks we can do better, and I do too. And they have met and come up with a wonderful strategic plan. And I know the chief's going to be talking about that with you all tonight. But one of the reasons that we share this with you is because we know we cannot do this by ourselves. We have to have you as our partner. We have to have you being some extra set of eyes on the street so you can support this wonderful police force as we go forward. We can't do it alone. We have to have you. Thank you so much.
I really appreciate that. And Mayor has hit on, maybe doesn't even know it, but probably does because we talk a lot about partnerships. This is all going, there's going to hear a lot about that tonight, about partnerships and what's that one extra piece? You know, I keep referring to, you know, often about sports analogies and things. If you feel like you've hit a championship, you don't throw away the plan that you had before. You sort of look about at that plan and you try to tweak it to where the people, or the other team, or in our case criminals, don't expect you to go. So we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. So thanks for that, Mayor. But before I do, I want to say thanks again to the mayor. We have city officials in here too, I believe. Raise your hand. And I see them, they're being shy. They're over here. Thanks for, thanks for your support. Also saw our state rep, Mr. Brown, right over here. Thank you, sir, for coming. I want to, before we get started, we have a great, we have some great news in the police department. And before I jump into this, I want to introduce all of you to somebody. We already have two wonderful chaplains in our department, Toby and Daryl, that really have done a lot of things for us. Quite frankly, I wonder if we use and abuse them sometimes as much as, as much as what they do for us. So they're branching out and asking for help. And we have a wonderful volunteer, Rabbi Kerry Cosby. Can you come up? I want to introduce Rabbi Kerry. I won't put him on the spot, make him speak. And he's got a lot of stuff. Can you stop him for like five minutes? Because he's like looking at his watch, because he's got to be somewhere real quick. But I asked him, please, I want to introduce the city to another volunteer, somebody who helps us at times when if someone has a tragedy, we run into them, run into people with some of the worst moments in their life. We're not seeing you with your best hair day, right? And sometimes we just aren't skilled at doing both police work and the type of work it takes to get you to sort of be able to reach into your faith, recover from whatever's happening. And so folks like him, folks like the pastor in the back are wonderful assets for us. And you wouldn't believe a phone call when they're out at three o'clock in the morning, they're on a, they get a phone call on what we call one call, which is just an emergency notice, something just happened. And we don't even have to tell them, and they just show up at the, at the office to make sure that all the officers are okay, the families are okay. If there's a big fire, they show up to help the fire department and the families recover. So he's, he's volunteering with us. I want to introduce him to you, and I want to publicly say thank you for volunteering. He went through a rigorous background, and he passed. I'm sure his denomination wants to know that, too. So thank you very much. Thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't take it a little bit further and thank Lloyd and his team for allowing us to use this facility again. I think, what'd you tell me? You average like 26 families a day or something like that to come here? 26 or 30 families come through here every day? Every day. I would have thought weeks, a month, or... That's just amazing work for what you guys do. And that's, we're always talking about what's the one thing you can, what are you doing today to make Whitehall a safer place? What's the thing that you do to make Whitehall safer? And one of the things that, that's, that's a prime example right there, the stuff that they do here to help families who are in need for multitudes of things, from just needing some food and clothing, to, we've talked a little bit about human trafficking and the opioid problem. And so Lloyd, thank you, and I wish we could all give them a round of applause for what they do. Speaking of that opioid problem, I have a volunteer in the back, back here. He doesn't know, we're not paying him, right, Mayor? This fire department's not getting paid right now? He doesn't. Assistant Fire Chief Chris Minipays and his team are back here. If you have some questions or things about the, he has a wonderful program in place, not just him, but the fire department and the city on their safe, safe stations. That has gotten recognition all across, just not just Franklin County in Ohio. I think you've been to Washington DC because of your success, am I correct? So he's, he's spread, so Whitehall is now impacting not just Whitehall and Ohio, but the nation. And it has a lot to do with the folks back here and the thing they put in place to help people. And I think they have like a 50-some percent success rate, which the national average is 11. So that's, that says something, right, for the work they're doing. So if you, I think he's giving out Narcan or things like that. So if you want, if you're interested, stop back here and talk to him. He wanted to stop and be here for an opportunity for you. And lastly, before we jump into it, where's Ms. Sherry? Always got to thank the people who put these things together, right? And we now call her Married Sherry. Sorry. She just got married. All right. So now that I embarrassed my assistant, let me move on. All right. So if you, if you folks remember, I didn't, do I need to turn this on here? I am technology deficient, apparently. There we go. I'll go old school and just push the buttons. So if you, if you remember, it's almost three years ago since we were sitting in this same building, and which is why I thought about, Lloyd, you think we would, you know, this jinxed ourselves. It worked so good the last time, let's start here again, and let's sit and meet with the folks in your building, and let's talk about what we did before, but what we're going to do moving forward. And gracious, as you know, to allow us to do that. And I started, so I thought to myself, what did we do? It's been so long, right? Doesn't seem like it's been that long, but it has been long. Or three years is ending in January, right? And so I wanted to go back and see what exactly, I don't want to look at you and say, you remember, some of you may have, may not have been here, you remember three years ago when we said, trust us, this is what we're going to do? My mind said that's what I said, but I had to go back and watch the video because it's on YouTube, right? And so I'm watching this video, and I'm thinking to myself, man, we made a lot of promises. And I'm hoping that we resolved a lot of those, and you think that we resolved those when we get done showing you some of the results. But we're not really here so much to talk a lot about what we did in the past, because as far as we're concerned, it's the past. But I know you want to know about it, and certainly the city should celebrate it. We had a lot of support from you folks in the community, from the city officials to give us the resources necessary to do this task, this job, these goals, and, and moving, but we're focused on moving forward. We're focused on what's next. What have we got to do to make this better? We're happy that we've cut burglaries in half practically, but we want it to be even further. We want to cut that half and half, and then we want to cut it again at half. And I want people to start thinking, the criminal elements, to start getting their own little projects together, their own strategic plan to work amongst themselves about how to stay out of Whitehall. That's what we want. So that's what we've been talking a lot about. We've been talking about Whitehall sort of not having a negative attitude, but having an attitude that this isn't, you don't come and commit crimes here in Whitehall. We're building things, we've got businesses coming, your housing market's going up, a lot of great things are happening. And as I often tell the media, if you don't get on that train of Whitehall, you're going to miss it. And you folks know that, but a lot of them don't know that. So let's do this real quick. Let me talk about what we promised before, give you the results, and then let's talk about what we're trying to do next, right? We talked about this here, this was our goals. And our three-year strategic plan, this goal, these goals here have not changed for the next three years. Why would we change it? It's successful, it's the playbook, it worked, we're going to continue to do that. And certainly, there's nothing in there that, that everything else we need to do in policing can't be, can't fit in there anyway. So, but the top one is the first thing you think about with police, right? Resolve and crime, resolve and solve and reduce crime. We've done a lot of that. We're not happy, we want to do some more. But we also want to hit something else as an organization. And we've been talking about this a lot, and we're going to, we're going to get to the point where we're going to be satisfied, probably never. But being an organization that we feel like we are the model, police department, for not just Whitehall, not just Ohio, but for the nation. And we do that with folks that are sitting over here that I'm going to introduce to you in a minute. With leadership like this, and holding ourselves accountable for you, you holding us accountable to an expected professional operation, and that we have training and skills, and we know what we're doing, and we follow up with crimes, and we find the bad guys, and we resolve and mitigate these types of things. So we are, that's one of our major, a major piece of our strategic plan. The thing I'm going to talk the most about today in our upcoming strategic plan is operation-based. But there's a lot of stuff, which I'm not going to bother you with, we will put this whole thing on the internet if you want to read it. But it's a lot of stuff going on administratively, just making these operational things successful that you're just not seeing because they're inside the building with the doors closed, right? It's holding ourselves accountable to a professional standard, to training, and making sure that we're doing things the right way, right? And so it's not easy. If any of you run a business or have, or work someplace where you have employees working for you, let's not forget that these police officers aren't super people that just came right off Mars. They're super to me, but they didn't come from Mars, right? They come out from, they're just, they're us. They're you, or us, right? So what I want you to remember is this, we will hold ourselves accountable, and we want you to hold us accountable. And if you're interested in how we're going to do that, pull that off the website later, but we're not going to really bother you tonight. We could answer some questions if you're still interested. All right? So this is what we talked about. We all talked as a team three years ago about what is driving all the violent crime and narcotics problems and stuff in Whitehall, and we all agreed that it all comes right down to that bottom-left thing, theft. And if you could, nobody's going to, no, people aren't going to work for 40 hours taking that pay trick to buy their drugs. They're typically not really even working anymore, right? So they run out of money fairly quickly, and then they got to start stealing, steal from their families, steal from businesses. And so we, we've believed from the very, from the very beginning of this, if our focus was on theft, and we could make the theft arrests go up for, for all, for everything that if you're stealing, that we could begin to have an impact on removing the resources that are used here to buy drugs and so on. And then take a very strong approach to narcotics, we've done that last three years. I'm certain that we can sit here and talk all day about all the great stuff, but we would say follow Facebook, follow Twitter, you'll figure that out, watch the news, because we got one of the, the best narcotics teams. And I'm not just saying that, you could talk to some other agencies, they'll tell you the same thing. And in fact, I won't say which agencies, but some have asked us to come and teach them what we're doing. So there's a lot of things that, and that's good. We want to spread this message, right? I would like all Franklin County doing what our narcotics team is doing, because that'll just keep it further away from Whitehall. But we believe that's what drives the violent crime. And so we really said, hold us to something. If you remember, I, some of you that are here, I asked this question, would you like it if I took your crime rate to zero? And the answer was, yes. Who would want, who wants it to go to zero? All right. And if you remember, the answer to that question was, that's really, that's the easiest job of a chief of police. I can make your crime rate go to zero so fast, in 12 months, it's over. 12 months, I guarantee I can be at zero, we just stop arresting people. And it becomes zero. So I always say that, sort of as a joke, but also to drive home a very, very, very important point. Sometimes crime rate, that word is misunderstood, and sometimes people get really focused on crime rate and forget the crime rate happens as a direct result of policemen making arrests. So if we go out and we work, what's going to happen to the crime rate? It's going to go up. There's a misunderstanding, that means we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing because the crime rate's going up. Crime rate is a direct result of arrest. So we said last time, trust me for a minute, for a minute, I'm going to necessarily drive the crime rate up. I don't know if you recall that. But it'll start to come down, right? And we did do that. On theft arrests, we really had a significant increase. We were hitting 60%, 70%, 80%, 120% increases in theft arrests. And if you look at the, the crime rate, it looked like it was going up because those crimes, because of what we were doing, right? And there was even a sort of a, you knew better, but there was a YouTube video that sort of floated around, all Whitehall is unsafe because of the crime rate and some kind of fuzzy math that this person did. Yet you knew the truth, and the truth was violent crime was drastically going, being driven down. Narcotics arrests were unprecedented. We were hitting seven and 800% increases. Unprecedented numbers on what they're doing. Two and $3 million worth of assets, of illegal assets related to narcotics, millions more in seized illegal narcotics themselves, guns, you saw a recent one with 73 guns taken out of a house. So there was a lot of things that was happening, including what's really important to you, and that's what we talk about often. We know what's important to a community that makes that community feel safe. Violent crime doesn't exist, we feel safe. There's very little violent crime, I feel safe, and my kids can go out and go to school, walk to school, be out in the playgrounds, be out at the city parks, and not have to worry about something happening to my kid. I know that's, that's the first step, right? The second thing is, can you leave stuff laying around a little bit? We suggest you don't, but if, for this very reason, but, but are you, is your stuff being taken? You work really hard for this stuff, for someone to come and steal it from you. So we know that theft-related crime is the second major thing that we should focus on. And then when we start hearing questions about speeders, and that becomes the primary conversation, it's an important part, it is the third part, third number-one thing that communities typically talk about, but it is also something that's an indicator to us that when people start asking us a lot about speed mostly, that we're taking care of those bigger problems, right? And we noticed that throughout the last three years. So I talked about this to you, just now, I'm just skipping through them, but I want to tell you, when I, when we said, hold those, hold us accountable to this, this is the three things, three years ago, we as a department asked you to bear with us for a minute as we made those, all those arrests, that we promised, we believed that those, these things here would go down. We had requested, and if you remember, I just did that a second ago, that was the number at the top. Our goal was 20% reductions. This is what we ended up with. Violent crime went down 28% over that three-year period. So this is looking at 14, 15, and 16 totals compared to 17, 18, and 19 totals up to the end of September in each, in each year. This is the numbers that were, that happened, 28% reduction in violent crime. That's a whole list of things from assaults, homicides, and so on. Robberies went down 40%. That was twice what we, our goal was. And, and I say burglaries, went down almost half. That's phenomenal numbers, and I think this, this group of folks sitting right here needs a round of applause. Because that's the third one we did. I'm certainly not leaving all of you out, because your 9pm routines and other things were certainly helpful, and some of your tips and things we got were helpful, and support we got from city leadership was unbelievably helpful, so, but, you know, I'm really impressed and proud of this group over here, so I'm going to keep stealing my time to say that. This was for occasionally, when I start talking 46%, I've heard the rule, you know, I've been to college, I know what people say about statistics, right? There's lies, there's really bad lies, and then there's statistics. So when you start talking percentages, people get a little bit, if you only had 10 and you laid at five, that's like 50% reduction. That sounds really like, okay, you're just playing numbers games. And so I don't have a problem being very transparent and throwing up the raw numbers so you can actually see the actual numbers that was happening, averaged of three, each three years before we started this plan. And our averages, our numbers for violent crime was 527. That's 527 people over that timeframe that were victims of violent crime. And while it's down 28%, 151 less people were victims, 376, it does not make us happy yet, right? But that's still a phenomenal reduction in three years. If you look at robberies, 120 less people were victims of robberies over that same timeframe that had this not been in place would have been, right? And that's, if you go back and keep looking at the years, you'll see that's the trend. Burglaries, 909 burglaries over a three-year period, 490 over this three. Now, that's still a lot to us, divided by three years. You can see there's still more than we want to see in the city. Our goal is still to increase what we did before, if we're successful in three years. Hopefully that number's down around 200, and then 100, then we'll take zero, right? That's the goal, obviously. We'll never stop till we get there, but that's what, that's the real numbers. I wanted you to see the real numbers because sometimes these can be misleading, and we're being very open to you and letting you know, this is what really happened in your city with some great work from these folks and to support all of you, we're giving us. And I just want to take the time to show you that from the last three years strategic plan. Now, this is 2013 through 2020, and I throw that up here for a reason. Said it before, and I want to emphasize this, there's a lot of things we did in the strategic plan, and it could have been very, very tempting to just change those dates and just be done. Why not? It worked, right? Why wouldn't we? Well, we successfully completed some things, and we believe, haven't done those great things before, we need to change our game just slightly, right? Sometimes when you're playing football, you're, you're blocking right all the time, right? Maybe you block left today, right? Maybe you open a hole this way, and they didn't see it coming, they didn't expect it. That's our job, from, from our perspective, is if we're saving lives, we're not winning football games, right? So we sat down and said, what's, what's next? What can we do to tweak this? And we knew that the plan that we put in place came directly from us. So we said, let's do something slightly different this time. What are we missing? Because we've already collectively put all of our brains together and determined what it is that we need to do as a department, and we were successful with it. But don't think that through those three years, we weren't still tweaking this thing. Every six months, we got together to discuss it and analyze where we were at. So we pretty much tapped our brains, right? If there was something extra we would have done, we would have done it last year or the year before, right? So we said, this time, we're going to reach down to the really, really, really smart people in our department, and ask the folks that you see driving up and down these roads that are actually doing the work. And so they went back to their teams, and they created a strategic plan that was, that their own folks had input on, on what, if they were in charge, the phrase is, if you were chief, what would you do? Well, if they were in charge, this is what I would do, because this is what I deal with every day, every night. And they put a plan together, and then we took that plan into one major plan for the, for the department. And that's what they've been working on for a real long time. And I was pretty, pretty amazed with some of the ideas and some of the stuff some of the officers and employees came up with. But what I want to emphasize is the 2017, 2020, we're still doing all those things that were successful. In fact, we're going to do some more of the things that were successful, but we have added some additional things to that plan, and that's what we're going to talk about. So I'm going to hit three really quick things, three initiatives, and then I'm going to turn over these guys for a second. The three things I just want to hit on from a more of a 50,000-foot view of what we're going to be doing as a department, and their, their plans individually are going to fit within these, and of course, remember what was done the previous three years, that's going to continue. We're going to do what we call High Visibility Anti-Thief Initiative. High visibility isn't just seeing the cruisers around, it is what I said earlier, Whitehall sort of having this, this attitude a little bit, this, this is not a place to come and commit crimes, right? And we have a whole bunch of things we would like to do in that arena. But high visibility means across Franklin County, the word is very clear that this is not the place to come and steal stuff. This is not the place to come and commit crimes. We're getting a lot of that already. I'm sure a bunch of you don't follow some of the criminals on Facebook, we do, and so we hear what they say, we know what they're saying, and we're getting some good intelligence from them, and our crime analyst unit does a lot of that for us. So we, so we know it's working. And when they, when they get arrested by one of our officers, and they want to argue that they're not in Whitehall because the sign's right here, they don't know that this, that's not exactly the right line, right? And you got that on video arguing with an officer, they, they were told to stay out of Whitehall and those types of things. So it's working, and that's what we want. That, that's what we mean by high visibility. When we say zero tolerance, across the board, everybody wanted a zero tolerance kind of policy, but we wanted to be very careful when you use that phraseology, sometimes that lands someplace that you don't want to be, right? You think about it in schools or things like this, you hear them on the news, where someone, it's a zero policy, so someone has a fingernail clipper or something like that, and then it gets everybody riled up because it was such a minor offense. We have a zero policy, zero tolerance, we're going to have a zero tolerance to the people that we identify and call thieves. Thieves, right? Not people who, your 12-year-old kid who took a pack of bubble gum, right? And it's not that stuff, right? That's, that's interventions with parents, those are normal things. So first-time minor, minor offenses, little things, sure, we'll do interventions, we have other things we can do through the courts and through just, just being police officers and working with people, right? It doesn't necessarily, not everything requires an arrest, right? But if you're identified as someone who has a criminal record, you're identified as somebody who repeatedly steals, we're not going to have any more tolerance for that. And we're going, you're going to go to jail, I don't care how small it is. And that's, that's the message that we're having on this high visibility, and they have a lot of things, they probably won't even be able to get into it all tonight, that they're going to talk about. Clearly, we want to still deal with aggressive drivers, crash reduction initiative, we're going to use some technology that's out there, and strategic deployment of our officers to rapidly deal with problems that show up as, as a crash statistic. And then the, the thing that we haven't really, and we are not, we're, I'm not happy with where we're at yet, and that is the humanity, what we call the humanitarian crimes. Kind of behind-the-scenes crimes, the domestic violence, the family violence, young children are being abused by parents or families or friends, child abuse, internet crimes against children. I just keep going down that list. That's what these sort of intimate kind of secretive kind of things in the background that you're just not seeing. We haven't, because we had 67% of our crimes three years ago was coming from outside of Whitehall into Whitehall, so there weren't even people living here, we had to stop that first. And I think we've done a really good job, as you saw with the statistics, to pull that off. But moving forward, we still going to deal with those, but we've got to start really doing something proactively about the stuff that is happening in people's homes that we aren't really getting to and stopping before it happens. And we don't like finding out about it because the hospital called us. We don't like finding out about it because someone was beaten so bad, that now all of a sudden, we got a domestic violence situation, we find out after the fact. We want to do some things and find ways to prevent that stuff in advance. A lot of that's partnerships, talked, the mayor talked about earlier. Partnerships is one of the best ways of doing this, because this is, you're sort of stuck[1735.38] between this, people have right to privacy in their homes, and so we can't, we can't, we won't, we don't want to be paying attention inside there, but at the same time, we, there are victims inside those places, and we got to figure out who the victims are and not mess with people who aren't victimizing. And then eventually, we want to get to a point where we have dedicated detectives just for them, right? That's what they're going to do, and that's our three-year goal, is to be able to get to that point. So, that said, I told these guys I would talk three minutes, and they knew that wasn't true, right? One of the things that we did that's really going to be helpful for us, I think, is we were able to, over the last year, decompress the department a little bit and take advantage of some really good leadership that was within that department. And I'm going to introduce you to four brand-new lieutenants that we have in the police department. And they are in charge of their sections, they are totally responsible for the outcomes, and they have embraced that, as you will see here shortly, with just, I'm only giving them a short period. They see me take three, they're probably going to take 20, maybe not. They rehearsed right in front of me for four minutes. No, they didn't. So, I'm going to introduce you to these folks here in a minute, and I think with knowledge and the background, every one of them have on Whitehall, I am just going, I'm sitting back, I'm going to be somewhat amazed at what they're doing, I'm setting the bar high for them, I know that, but they're going to do better than we did the last three years. I'm 100% certain of that. That's going to free the three of us up, and they're not going to come up to speak unless you ask them some questions, so let me just quickly introduce them. Our deputy chief, Tracy Sharpless, right here. Deputy chief. Next to him, next to him is deputy chief Dan Kelso. Deputy chief Kelso oversees our operations SWAT team and things of that nature, road patrol, and deputy chief Sharpless oversees detective bureau, basically administration of the department. So, that's going to free us up, come and hang out with you folks a little bit more and find out what's going on more in the community, what you can do to help us, what we can do to help you, how can we form some of these public and private partnerships to treat, to reduce crime. And so, that's what we're going to be doing a lot of, as well as helping, making sure that we're getting into that excellence in policing model. That said, I'm going to turn this over to the day shift lieutenant, who's right here, Lieutenant Brian Smith, and his sergeant is Dan Warlow, who's not here, so. Lieutenant Brian Smith. Next, I'm going to ask Lieutenant Chad Hunsinger, he's the commander of the slowest That was a joke. Second shift, afternoon shift, a very, very, very busy shift. Lieutenant Hunsinger has, working with him Sergeant Spencer Sires, which is in the back of the room back here. A lot of you, I'm sure, know Spencer Sires, so.
Since we're on our boat, sons of Whitehall, we grew up here, so that kind of gives us a little bit of an advantage when it comes to a lot of the known issues throughout the history of Whitehall. Currently, though, second shift, anybody who's tried to get around between the hours of 3:00 PM and 11:00 PM, that's when second shift is happening, knows it's a little challenging sometimes. Especially on Broad Street, Hamilton Avenue, Main Street, those are our main services. Those bring some interesting challenges for any law enforcement effort. The greatest advantage that we have, those, we also have the largest number of assigned patrol officers. We have nine officers, which includes one, every day, and two supervisors, lieutenant and sergeant. So, we're able to get our resources where they're needed to help with targeted enforcement efforts, drive, have very big, big concern for any community. So, we want to make sure we're getting resources where they're needed there. We're also wanting to make sure we're getting officers down at the schools, though, because right at the beginning of our shift, most of the schools are released for the day. So, we have many, many, many children kind of walking to school at the same time that a lot of folks are trying to get home from work. So, we've got two issues of congestion at the same time. And with the assistance of the school resource officers and the road patrol officers, we're able to fairly seamlessly get through that, navigate that minefield if we can. We also want to make sure that we are putting resources toward targeted enforcement efforts for the high-visibility crimes, things like the, in our last strategic plan, the chief said, we're going to stick with the same role model, the same model for the new strategic plan and focus on the things like the vagrancy issues, the issues of criminal damaging, all of that. We've got officers available to be assigned to handle those kind of problems. And it gives us an advantage over some of the other shifts that don't have as many officers to assign to that. So, we're very thankful and glad.
I have to go remind myself to be careful teasing him, he's also the SWAT commander and teaches all our self-defense stuff. All right. Next, I'd like to ask the midnight shift, a very interesting shift commander to come up, Lieutenant John Greb, and he has Sergeant Andy Smith who works with him.
Good evening, everybody. There's, there's almost a lot of reactive, they're in progress, they call. So, you're calling, we respond to, and don't know what. So, what we see with the, we see a lot of, these are, I can't say how many with the, I can't say how many, probably 5%. At least one person has not stayed in the house. This creates a myriad of families that need, before, there's defense absolutely with somebody from their home, with people maybe without income. We create, we make sure, we continue to make this work, too. We can get back to that, obviously, and we can, we sit up there at night, the circumstances are real when we're getting a bed, people, we're ready by, we operate, so. We need to, come back, make sure there's a protection, or whatever, if it's infected through the court, we can double check and make sure that they're getting the things they need to receive. So, we're going to address that. We also see a lot of the vagrancy, but we see it more because there's a lot of traffic in there, there's a lot of people on the streets, the people that are out, there's all your feelings, why people are out there, they're looking to get somewhere, or they're just now looking for trouble. So, we're going to deal with those issues and respond to those issues with community response, as far as just kind of pushing that, way I think that we're going to address as a shift, certainly you can turn with the alcohol, but alcohol-related violence, there's a lot of, the shift works hard, on the highest levels in the county, towards, over the enforcement of the past, and we're going to continue with that, but we're going to, more aggressive over the next 20 years, so we really want to go after this, we want to identify horrible situations, so those are the things we're going to grow as a shift.
My grandfather always told me that if you're, if you want to know the measure of a person, always look them in the eye, and that'll tell you the person's character and capabilities. I've found since I've been here about three and a half years, that's not always the case. I can know that I can know that someone's a great leader without ever looking them in the eye, because I don't think I've ever looked into Lieutenant Wilder's eyes, because he is way too tall. Lieutenant Wilder, our detective bureau.
Hello. My name is Chad Wilder. As he says, I work with the detectives and the narcotics. Very exciting. Before we talk about something, I wanted to take a minute to say, detectives are very experienced, they have 15, 14, and also very highly skilled. He can be an everything, they're very creative, they're very, they're very, I know they're just capable of everything, and they're, that's a group of people, same, but I do separate them from the narcotics. The narcotics unit is a piece manager, this is the most productive unit of its type, and everybody thinks we're number one. These guys are stupid and they're, or are creating, in some cases, come to us and ask for advice, very impressive. There's really no place they would practice in a drug dealer, they're very aggressive and everybody, just to give you an example, literally, just a few hours ago, while they were out, they were drinking, they were eating, because these guys are so strapped, they don't understand, they end up, that's, that's a sign, they're really great guys. I'm sure this whole group that I work with, they're someone that's bad, they've got, but that said, I want to say a little bit about the strategic plan, the strategic plan itself, and I just kind of wanted to talk briefly about tonight, we're focused on training, that's training, proactive coaching, and customer service. So, the first thing that I want to say about this training, we are going to provide experience to our frontline officers, we want the frontline officers to know and use this to handle, to be honest, and that is, with all this training and experience. We want to have a plan to do a better job of recognizing where theater friends might be applying to, and then also give them a, you're still looking a lot, I'm ready, we provide, more effective problems. The next area of our strategic plan that we need to discuss is more proactive, this is probably my favorite, speaking on my new career, and I really like to provide that police group. We're going to do things like increasing our brutal arrests, target some high-profile areas in the city with serious, we're going to be targeting and targeting violent criminals and offenders, we are going to be addressing, suing and red sports, criminals also, we are going to be doing some clean clothes, patrol and plain call, each couple of these criminals once in a while, so they drive around, they're not going to see us come, they're not going to want to like. The other rule I do here is just to stop crime, we put that guy, we don't, so in other words, it's very, we just, all the crime, we get it easy, we solve that crime, but it's just that much better if we can prevent the crime from happening, that's great. And then, the last area that I want to talk about is our customer service. This is a big, this is very important. We want to make sure when somebody files a report with a petty, they're getting good service. There's some of the things we're going to, are they getting feedback on their case, or are they getting residente? So, you file a report with us, I'm going to be auditing, how long does it take us to make that first phone call when you file a report with us? How fast do we start working on the case, and how fast can we, I'm going to be watching that, because people want answers, so we're going to make sure that. I also want to make sure that we're doing a thorough investigation. We, currently, we have two sets of eyes that look at investigation, so the detective department can't, can't compete all day long, reading evidence, read, looking at evidence and different things, and when they get a lot, they forward that to me for approval. We're going to add a step in there, where they're going to forward that to a fellow detective first, and then you got one detective with one, this is serious, we just multiply that times two by less than a second, and go, hey, maybe we should look for video, or maybe we should do something else, or maybe you did everything you could, it's already been settled, but we just want to make sure we're not missing anything with any investigation. So, we're going to be doing these tier reviews. And the final thing we're going to do is, when this is all said and done, we want to find out from the people that file these reports, how do we do, do we do this? If we get to you in a timely way, if you bring us to a reasonable, but we're going to be doing some surveys, we want to get you, what we can do better, and what we can do right, we want people to feel we did well, and we want to, so those three things, training, crime, police, and customer service, are where we're going to have to, thank you.
So, what are the, last thing I want to do, and this is what's really important to us, is we want to hear from you. So, as we wind this down and get ready to turn over to you asking some questions, I always go back to, we can't do this by ourselves thing. You don't want a police officer in everybody's yard or standing in your living room, that's probably about the closest way we could pull off shutting all the crime down, and that's too invasive, clearly, you don't even have the tax base nor the people who are going to even be able to pay for all those folks. We don't want to do that, not going to happen. So, in order for us to still achieve the same results you would get from that, we need your help, right? And that's what the Safer Whitehall Initiative's always been about, it's been asking you, what are you going to do today to keep Whitehall safer, to make it safer? If you can't answer that question daily, it doesn't have to mean that we actually don't want you making arrests, right? It means if you see something, call somebody and tell them. If you, it, it, what's the best thing you could possibly do is to eliminate all theft opportunities from around your environment and help your neighbors do the same thing, eliminate opportunities of crime from around their environment. I always say, get to know your neighbors, we're living in a world where people just sit on their cellphones and they don't know who their next-door neighbor is, right? So, get to know your neighbor when they're going out of town, you're watching. We have a program, if you go out of town, contact the police department, we will then put you on a list, and our officers will check your house for you while you're gone. And we do that, and we even send you a note letting you know how many times we were there, so, and we advertise that, it's something that is a service, and there's a bunch of other things that we do, but we could sit up here all night and talk about all of the great things that the department's doing, the folks that we're talking the most about aren't even here because they're out working. But, they are doing some tremendous things, and if you have some questions, you want to know what they're doing, we're certainly here to answer your questions. This is the new leadership of the department that you're looking at right here, these are the folks that will answer your questions, and as Lieutenant Wilder says, if you're not getting the service that you want, call somebody and let us know, we don't know how to fix it if you don't let us know it's a
We don't know how to fix it if you don't let us know it's an issue. Um, sometimes it's, it's a misunderstanding, uh, on your part or our part. Uh, and sometimes we need to fix something within the department and we're not perfect. And so if we need to fix it, we need to know about it in order to fix it. And that's where the surveys come in, so we'll be doing, uh, quite a bit of those, and that's a great idea. Um, so that said, um, I remind you that we need your help. We're going to partner, we're going to continue community policing, all these things that you heard before. We're not stopping any of that, you just heard a little bit of some new things. So with that said, we have a wonderful crew of people right here. If you have questions about what we're doing moving forward, um, we'll, Sherry will come around and, um, let you ask the questions and then we'll, somebody here will answer your question for you. We like to put this out on YouTube so everybody can see it that wasn't here. Because it's, you know, that way I can come back in three years also and hear what I said. So she may come around with the microphone because they won't hear what you said on YouTube if you don't have it in front of your face, even though I don't really need it to talk to you, so right here.
Yeah, just, uh, holidays are coming up, okay? What kind of trends should we as the citizens kind of be looking for? Things maybe we can look for to help you guys out to do your job? Because, you know, it's a special time of the year, a lot going on. And it's a, it's a very good time for criminals to, uh, rip people off and stuff like that, so, you know.
Uh, those time of year, times of year are really wrought with fraud and theft and stuff like that. But this seems like a great opportunity for the person who's running that show. Lieutenant Wilder, you got any ideas for them for, uh, the holidays?
Yeah, there's a lot of things that we could talk about with that. But if I had to just give you one thing to take away from this meeting, it would be this. This December twenty-fourth, December twenty-fifth, January third in that area, and it's thirteen degrees outside, and you see somebody hanging around outside that has no apparent direction or goals or objectives where they're headed, call the police, suspicious person. Those people that are out there all night long are breaking into cars, stealing credit cards, stealing laptop computers, breaking into houses, things of this nature. But we don't always know where they belong, the neighbors, but you guys know where they belong. When it's cold like that, people aren't typically out for a leisure, they're out there doing something they shouldn't be doing. So you see those people, call the police, ask the police, ask them.
Yeah, I've, uh, I've seen guys, uh, what's it called, patrolling on bicycles, kind of meandering around and, uh, and things like that, uh, to, in neighborhoods, not in Whitehall, but in Columbus and things like that. And I always thought, uh, something's going on.
I've spent a significant time, uh, in my career on third shift patrol, and there's nothing I like, though. Somebody calls in a suspicious bison. You've got to have lights on your bike, nobody has them. I can stop you, check you out. If you're legitimate, you're on your way in two minutes. If you're not legitimate, I got you right, brother.
And, uh, we didn't mention. We also have, uh, a, a bike patrol of our own, too. You, you start to see those in the summer in some of the parks. We have, uh, some train guys with some new, with some new equipment and so you'll start to see them in the parks also. Anybody else?
I have a question about the stop sign on fairway. Not a question for me, but how much is it impacted speeding? Is it working through?
Well.
Not on fairway, not on fairway, see, on fairway. Yeah, fairway, that, huh?
Well, in general, I'll give you a general answer from a, as a old school traffic guy that I am, that stop signs, uh, always force people to slow down. So in and of itself, the fact that you have to stop impacts speed. Um, but we got some statistics and things coming off. I don't know if you got that one on top of your head right now, what the fairway, uh, speed statistics are at this time. Um, but if you want, you can answer.
Well, Tom, Tom Brown actually told me the other day, he was redoing fairway, but he had seen a decrease in speeds on fairway. He thought it was because of that speed. But the stop sign, he does have some data from, uh, prior to that stop sign. We were using a different method to gather that data. At the time, we were using, as you seen, the, uh, the light, click touch, what your speed is, all that kind of stuff. Obviously, people are slowed down when they see the covert boxes. Nobody knows they're off, so he's seen a slowdown with covert boxes, which is telling him, you know, it's not the, I think it's flashing, telling him. So, yeah, we could believe it's working.
One of the things, well, as part of this initiative, again, we, we didn't get into everything, but if you read this, you'll see that we have it in there. And I make, I think Lieutenant Smith touched on it briefly. One of the things we're going to do with all of this data is we intend to put that on the website in real time. Now, we have to upgrade to this thing at some point, but our intention, uh, in 2020 is to have the website up with the major roads, showing you what our studies have shown and what the average speed is there. We're going to show you what the speed is from coverts, covert equipment, and then what the speed is when we, when, in the, the signs you see that tells you what your speed is. Uh, there's a difference between that. You see it, you tend to slow down, right? And then additionally, our own studies on what happens when we go there at different times and what's the real impact. But we, we get calls all the time about, there's a lot of speeders on my road right here, right? And sometimes that's accurate and sometimes in comparison, that's not accurate. And so, but we're going to, but we, as, again, as part of our neighborhood, or as part of our strategic plan, we want to resolve all neighborhood complaints. And so we even have something in our strategic plan about dealing with neighborhood complaints. And that's a neighborhood complaint. You call us and you say, there's, there's speeders on my road. Well, we're going to bring somebody to that because that's a complaint and we're supposed to be responsive to you. Uh, but what ends up happening sometimes is when we pull the map up and we see where all of our major problems are for traffic and speed, we have to deploy resources there when we have time, when we're not on calls. And we really want to keep putting them in those areas, uh, but we still want to also address the needs of the community. So sometimes we're pulling people away from those really red hot areas to, to go to, to go to an area that's not nearly as bad as you, when you look at the entire city. And so one of the things we believe can help us is giving the public access to what we already know. And you can get on the website and look when you think your road's here and you'll see, you know, the, the average speed in that is only five or four miles above. When other places we're at fifteen and twenty, we got to deal with those. And that's also used places where we have a high crash rates. So we plan to do that in the future. You'll see some of those and that'll answer a lot of these traffic related questions. Somebody up front, I thought, had a question on here.
Excuse me. At the end of that, the first meeting you had, it, I raised a question about hand handlers, people coming up. And at that point, you had had the signs up and the powers that be, you said, you couldn't do that, you couldn't prevent them from asking for money.
Correct.
It's getting really bad, especially down in the Kroger area, roses, all of that. You can't go anywhere without someone popping up out of nowhere. Has that been readdressed?
Well, we, I will, I will say a decent turnover. These guys are dealing with it even more. But I will tell you, first and foremost, the powers that be would be the United States Supreme Court.
Right.
So that's the final answer for us, like, you know, so i- i- we don't really have a choice in this. It's, it's their freedom of speech. But there are certain things that we can deal with, so it's not totally off the table for us. Um, there, there's certain, you know, they don't, can't accost you, you can't be, you know, held against your will and things of that nature. So there's still things that we're still dealing with. But unfortunately, the United States Supreme Court said that they are permitted to do that. Um, we, it really not, is not a major problem until they start to become a problem for you, or they're standing by your ATM, or they're starting to do different things than additional crimes. But let me talk, tell you what they're doing over here, Lieutenant Hudson.
Uh, he kind of touched, she touched on it fairly well there. The way we address it generally is by dealing with all of the surrounding issues. If they are walking in traffic to get money from the car. If they are preventing you from being able to move freely because you have that privilege as well. Um, if they are doing anything else criminal, we address those things. Secondarily, if you call us about a problem, a specific problem of a specific person, there's nothing in the constitution that prevents us from saying hello to someone and letting them know we are here. And sometimes that is enough to get them to move on sometimes.
I think oftentimes, those people have more to have other jurisdictions, so simply by calling us and allowing us to make contact with them, a lot of times, they will find out that more than we get rid of that one.
Okay, well, I personally am intimidated by it. I'm small, I hold, I'm not as quick or anything, but, um, it intimidates me. And I know that was one of the things, it seems like these people come out of nowhere. Boom, they're right in your face, and it's the element of surprise. So by the time we can call you, they'd be gone.
Well, we under, and, and we certainly sympathize with you. I wish there was a better answer for you, uh, because we can't tell them not to do that anymore. Um, but what we would say is, um, if you're in an area where, where you know that they frequent and, and you're concerned about being there, always be there with a second person if you can, if you can. Um, and that you would call us if it becomes a routine problem so that we can be there, Gregor, because of, you, we're just like you, we don't know where it's going to happen or where someone's going to be. Um, if they meet any of that criteria, then we will come out and deal with it. And lastly, just tell people to leave you alone. And if they don't, then it starts to, that, that starts to head down a different type of crime, it's not panhandling, right? Um, but again, I mean, have that cell phone on, dial and be ready to call. Uh, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you that when you call the police department, twenty-nine seconds, we're there. So obviously, that, that, there's a, we do have a good response time of four minutes plus, but it's, that's still a lot can happen in that four minutes, right? Sometimes it's longer than that because we're all on calls and can't break free because of bigger things going on at that time, so. All I, all I can say is, first and foremost, always remember, we teach this in self-defense classes all the time, especially female, uh, self-defense classes. Um, you are number one responsible for your own safety first. Um, we're, if we're there, we'll do whatever we can, but you have to have some plan in place when we can't get there. And sometimes that plan is to have a buddy with you, not to frequent certain areas if you can help it. And if, if someone's coming toward you, just say, leave me alone, I'm not interested. Then if they continue, call us, then we can come and deal with that part of it. But as long as the Supreme Court allows it to happen, um, not much we can do about it. Yes, sir.
I would make this, I guarantee everybody, if you're making this. And so in this area of hand handling, this is one of the areas that you can really use the assistance from the community. Because if, if we do not, as a community or as a group of people, if we give them nothing, eventually they give up. And I also want to make the distinction also that not all of them are hand handlers. Some of them are just beggars, they're trying to get something for free. I mean, I had sixteen year old kids, I know they're sixteen, fifteens, can I have a dollar to ride the bus? Or whatever it is that they, all they're trying to do is to get you to give them something for nothing. And if we all say, I'm not doing it, then if they can't get, make any money doing it somewhere, they will do it somewhere else, just not in Whitehall. So that's an area where, I, I know that doesn't really help, but.
I always tell them, no.
Right, that's the thing that we really need to be cognizant of as a community is, that's one of the areas where everybody in the city can help out, can help them up with police work, and help, uh, every other citizen in the city also.
Very well said. This is a community that has resources for just about anything that you would need. And if you, something you don't have a resource for, we'll find it. We even got a state station. Right over here, somebody had a.
Uh, before I get over to Chief Pike, it's not a question, I just want to thank you for your service and service here.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, first and foremost, thank you for having this meeting, uh, this evening. I'd like to know, uh, does the community have any type of resources for me as a landlord? You know, you put someone in your home and, you know, you do a background check, you, you know, do all the things, you drive by, you ask the present neighbors to kind of watch out and call you if they see some funny things going on. Um, but in particular, I have one house that I think, hmm, maybe needs some extra attention. So without me invading their rights, does Whitehall have any type of program that if you went to that house five times in a, a small town, as a landlord, is there something I could come to Whitehall, pull a report and say, there's fifteen violations here, you know, if I see this again, you know, uh, there's, you're going to be evicted?
You got three or four heads knocking, knocking, knocking. So any one, any one of them can answer that question with.
So if you're directed towards that, our Crime Analysis Unit works very hard, uh, with the Department of Commerce, Flexes especially. They have kind of standing requests for those type of reports. But you can always request, it's public information, so you can always request a report on any location in the city. I would encourage you to do that because you can't take action if there's police activity at, at your own location, perhaps.
Okay, thank you. On that same note, if you, I have a landlord behind me that'll burn to any party that things going on all the time. Is there any way that the police department can hold the landlord accountable if they continually rent to the same kind of people that bring problems to us?
Well, I'll just talk about that, not only a camp, but what we have. We've been very successful in working with our city attorney's office, uh, for nuisance abatement, uh, program. We've actually closed up probably a dozen homes in Whitehall due to drug sales or repeat calls for service. So absolutely, I would encourage you, every time something like that happens, to call us, we can document it because that's the key to getting the, uh, abatement through court, is the number of calls for service. So you make the call, we'll send an officer out and investigate it. Obviously, if you call and there's nothing going on when we get there, you know, that's not going to be so great. But, you know, anytime that there's a lot, a lot of party or something like that going on, certainly call us and we'll send an officer out and document what's, what's taking place.
Does this particular house have a SWAT raid one morning, real early, so?
Well, I can guarantee you, if our SWAT team hit the house, the next day, the homeowner will, uh, receive a letter from us. Uh, telling them if it happened again, that we were going to proceed, uh, nuisance abatement.
Okay, thank you.
I love this, I love the city with all, all the activity, all the, uh, the home renovation program, which my wife and I got to benefit from that, the police department coming out like this, thank you very much. Uh, listening to all this, I was wondering, uh, we have a home renovation program. And sometimes surveillance cameras around the house are cost prohibitive to some of our residents. I was just wondering if there's any kind of program that could be started where if we bought surveillance cameras en masse and offering to our citizens for maybe a discounted price from what the big box stores have, that people might be more apt to use those and benefit, or even.
It's a great idea. It's not something that I'm aware of, we've got a program to do that, but it's certainly not a bad idea.
And one more thing, is there, uh, talking about calling in, is there truly an anonymous way to, to, to police? I know people have been in permanent homes and because they said something, or people have been just screwed at, and, uh, I just want, if there's a way that you can do that, would it be any fear of them, any surprises in this?
We have three ways. So, uh, there's a text tip line, personally, I don't recommend that one. We've had some issues with it, it's, the way people text isn't really, doesn't give us great information. But it's there, it's on our website, you can find that one. We also have, if you dial, uh, indoor police department, there's an anonymous tip line. And then you press button A or something like that, that goes to anonymous tip line. You can leave us a voicemail, tell us anything you want us to know. And we don't, we don't take that information, get back to people, what you're saying, here's who I am and I want to call back. But other than that, it's anonymous tip line, you can do any information. And we encourage that, that one works really well. That's my favorite one. We also have a, um, an email where you can, uh, click on it through the website and basically send it. It comes to us by email and it has fields in there where you can put your name and email and all that stuff, but you don't have to. You can do it anonymous there, so you can write out what you want it. Basically, it's called complaints, um, complaints, information is what it is. You click on it, you can send the same thing you want, that's, so all three of those will get to us. Actually, all three will come right to my desktop. And then I disseminate, I disseminate those to the people I need to investigate those complaints. Please never use them for ongoing, something that's going on right now. That, I mean, that we need to address right now. Anything that you know of, maybe you could tell us something about a crime that did occur, help us out with those, that's a great, great for us.
I don't think we could emphasize enough not to use that for in-progress stuff. We come in in the morning and we find an email, someone's in the middle of beating his life or something like that and they're, it's over. Probably did send somebody later.
Correct.
Um, and, and multitude of other types of crime, you know, the robbery in progress stuff. We're not going to get that till the next day, so.
Yeah, I've got, uh, two questions. One's to piggyback on hand handling this problem, this St. Crovers. This Krovers had his say, he would be out there today. Like I asked a guy, it felt to me real aggressive, uh, this last week. And he, I said, does Krover know you're, you're out here? He said, oh, yeah, he feels a little bad and everything. He said, "Oh, yeah, I live in this little bed and everything." And, uh, he moved on. That's one question. The second one is, how safe is it for us to be with garage doors open during the day when we're grounded? My neighbor, my neighbor's small garage doors, and I'm, I'm feeling a little like, uh, I've got delivery duties. So I'm not gonna tell what's going on there.
Well, let me go, start with the, the, the second one first, which is, we, we suggest you don't leave anything unsecure. And that isn't anything specific about Whitehall, that's just society in general now, right? So, uh, the opioid problem drives a lot of that need for theft. And if you leave a wide open opportunity, it's no different leaving your window down and going in your house and you've got cash in the, in your consoles sticking out, they're gonna go after it. Um, it's all about opportunity. So if you're, if you're going to remove opportunity, you, you close those doors, right? Um, we're not saying if you leave it open, and you just said, "I leave mine open, my neighbors leave it open," and it seems like, you know, like you're getting by with it. But it's just a matter of an opportunity, the right thing's crossed and then... And then lastly, and I say about that is nine PM routines, 24-hour thing, nine PM to nine PM. Secure your stuff, but somebody else will, I can't remember the other question.
The other question was directed towards the, what business has basically a responsibility or what they have a duty to do. Any business can trespass somebody from their property, uh, just for whatever reason. A complaint on a panhandling issue is, is, is something that can happen. And what can be asked of that is, they're gonna make that declaration in our presence. Okay, because they can tell you, now, come back, this police kid there, we're gonna say, "Well, we can't enforce that yet." You're gonna tell us now between you, the suspect and us, and we're gonna know about it the next time. But if you talk to management and the person's still there, they've called the police, we can get there, we can take care of it in one, in one action and direct them. But they're no longer welcome in the business and they can be trespassed. And since we view them on that afterwards, we can take that arrest without anybody making it as long as we witness them on the property. We keep, we keep a record of that in our, our dispatch center. So it's something we can look up and we know the suspect's name, we can just check the name as we drive by, ask for the trespass and we'll know that, that's happened.
I, I've seen that the Krogers, that, uh, they have a security guy there and somebody complained to them and they called you guys and, you know, it was happening very quickly. So that's a really good idea, just to go to the security guy. The store has a security guy.
Go to the security guy. Yeah, most of these people who are panhandling, they know how the law works, they know how the issues go. When they're told to leave and the threat of the police arriving, they don't want to see us because when they understand that action may be taken. But again, they don't wanna see us. They don't want to be noticed by the police. They're gonna move along, just in that, I'd say they won't come back. Threat of the police responding can usually get them looking out of the way.
Any time for a couple more?
Hi, um, you've talked a couple times about, um, domestic violence situations that we're seeing in Whitehall. Can you speak a little bit, like, on what you're seeing as far as percentages? Are you seeing an increase or a decrease in those cases? And is law enforcement in Whitehall, have you officers all been trained on the lab program? And are you utilizing that as well?
These are second shift here.
As far as the percentage of, of these numbers are far from... Unfortunately, with domestic violence, that's very, very reactive crime where we're...
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
I apologize. Uh, domestic violence, generally a very reactive crime where we're being called to a certain location for a specific problem. Um, what we're trying to do is to become more proactive than a prevention aspect of it. Uh, we have some strategies in place for that, but right now, I don't have numbers.
How do our, our officers in Whitehall, are you guys all trained on, uh, that, please, that's the protocol?
Yes, 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 we use it in every case.
Um, with all the norg overdoses, I hope I'll never encounter somebody that is okay. But what is my responsibility? I mean, if I were to have a pen to, you know, to use someone, to help them, I mean, I think I probably would try, but is there a danger to me to try and help somebody and then am I responsible if something does happen if I try and help somebody?
Well, I'm not a...
So what can I do?
I'm not an attorney, but you got a good Samaritan law that sort of helps you with that. Um, and these guys at the back do not have a problem with teaching you how to use that Narcan properly. And by the way, he's standing up because he probably wants to give you the first box, but...
Come see us happen first, we're handled, federal test, but the chief's right. You are protected, good Samaritan law, we're the state of Ohio. Uh, you are, you should not, you're only getting in trouble for trying this.
And is there anything I can do? Like, I'm so afraid that my grandkids are going to touch something or, you know, like, something would happen. So is there anything I can do to, like, prevent that?
Well, your first, the first step was your question, right? So you have an interest in making sure that they're safe, which means your next step is communicating and educating them and talking to them. We have a lot of resources. You can reach out to the police department, we can get you educational material. Our school resource officers are, when they're in the school, are teaching stuff about everything from human trafficking, you know, opiate, drug use, alcohol, those things on a routine basis. We have some tremendous, uh, three tremendous school resource officers who are, who are 24 hours on the job, really, because they love these kids so much, um, who are doing a lot of things in that arena. And there are just a lot of resources. You can talk to the fire department and get a lot of resources on helping educate yourself, uh, the adults around you and those kids. But that's the first step. Number one, you gotta talk to them.
If you're like that, real quick, just teach kids about the needles, leave them alive. Don't teach them to care about them. They have a natural curiosity about that stuff. Mention to them that they may catch, just to leave alone, just like they would require them. So to avoid all these dangers, leave them alone, let an adult know. But further, what you can do to protect them, get rid of the medication under your house. Kind of, you can make drop boxes. A lot of the police department, 24 hours a day, the questions asked, pills, containers are in, whatever else. Dispose them there, that's the proper way to dispose them. Don't flush them down the toilet, don't remove the system. Get them to the police department, it's open 24 hours a day, you can just drop them in there. If there's a form to fill out or anything else, you just drop it in there and then along the way. It's just like a mailbox, so get rid of that stuff out of your house. And that, don't leave them there, right?
According to my clock, we have time for at least one more question. We'll make it two.
Hi, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's kind of a long way from what we've been talking about the city, but if you happen in that, the Whitehall, uh, wanted a news today, we can have an air, we can have a... With a ground bus of forty-five pounds of fentanyl, the news says that the hill of Whitehall, that's just a bridge in the mine. Did you see a light at the end of the tunnel?
Wow, that's a really, really great question, right? Do we see a light at the end of the tunnel? Um, well, we see a lot of job security, right, at the moment. I don't mean to make light of something that's very, very serious. Um, I think in our world, if you were to talk to our narcotics guys and, 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 um, those of us who've done law enforcement for a long time, we know a lot of the stuff is cyclical, right? So we know that we're gonna be on the opiate train for quite a while. At some point, it's switching over to the stimulant train where we're starting getting the methamphetamines and, and cocaine. And we're starting to see that, the narcotics folks will tell you that some of the majority of the stuff that we're arresting people for now are beginning to lean towards the meth stuff. Um, but that doesn't make anything any better. That just means they're all cranked up with some other drug. And now they're, instead of being lethargic, they're very dangerous, right? And, and then the fentanyl, and, but each time they cycle around, right? They find a new way to change the drug or add something else to the drug to make it worse. Um, so I wish I could tell you that, yeah, this will end in 2020 or 2021. All I can tell you is, in Whitehall, we have one heck of a reputation in the drug community to stay out and they're warning each other. And every time our narcotics guys do a wonderful job and a big bust and we put it on the news and let them know, we're not putting it on the news so we can tell everybody bad stuff's happening in Whitehall. We put it on the news to, that message is going to the bad guys. And right below the Facebook pages of every one of them, you see all the comments. They're making fun of each other. "How stupid are you to go to Whitehall? You should have known not to go to Whitehall." They're in there doing this, and then it begins to, Whitehall's cleaning up all Franklin County and you start seeing com- comments like that, which isn't technically true. We just have good relationships with other departments, but, um, and we're just gonna keep doing what we do. That is a very, very, very large question for a nation, uh, and policyholders. Um, and we, as a society in general, really, I wish I could give you a real good answer to that. But I just know from what we can do, we're gonna do a hundred percent. And if there's more than that, we do that. Would you say, add one more over here?
Um, I've been looking into getting one of those ring doorbells, just for my, personal safety. And I was reading that there's a way that those can be linked into what they call a neighborhood. And that, that information can then be shared with their local police department. Have you guys heard anything about any of this?
I'm, to be honest, I'm not familiar with that. Have you guys heard that?
Absolutely. And again, not the normal product over another, but they're all very similar in that you can share that information and what value take that information? Use that information to solve numerous different crimes that aren't related to your house. But your house, the camera at your house witnesses something for us, has been extremely helpful. So using those type of cameras is extremely beneficial to us. And when you link into that, you're kind of opening up what your camera can see to other people in the area. But again, the police have access to that large group of that, so you can look around on this. That's why I entered your house, spying the area so we can kind of track common issues and kind of...
But just to clarify, we don't have, I had this question similar that you just asked, like, two days ago, someone called me. We can't monitor your cameras. We don't have a, a monitoring those in real time. That's something basically you would give us later.
Chief, this hasn't made it to your office yet, but Detective Zicky is actually working on a program where we are looking to be, if the citizens want to, registering cameras, ring bells, all these things. So we have a database. If you have a serious incident and a suspect leaves a scene, it's very difficult to go knock on every door for fifteen blocks to maybe get that car description. But with these registered cameras, we can go to the specific house and we know a camera's, "Hey, this car went by your house at 2:30 in the morning, can you check your camera footage for us?" So that is something that we're working on now, is registering these cameras with the police department. We can't view it live, but we can go back and get that information later, which is super helpful. We've actually, not too far from that, solved a homicide that we created with a camera.
Well, I would like to, uh, sort of wrap it up and let you know, number one, we'll be staying up here. If you have some additional questions, you wanna come up, I wanna let everybody get out of here. It's, uh, school night, so I'm gonna be probably still get to school tomorrow, right? Look young enough, so, um, that said, um, I wanna, one last time, thank these group of folks right over here. All right, thanks, and I guess we'll see you in six more months.